So I've got a seven oh one, uh, I think we could probably just get rolling in the interest of time. So I'll do a roll call for attendance, uh, Matt Lowry. Bill Spaulding.
Here.
And Theo know. And myself, so all members of the planning board, the reception of Kevin York are present. Uh, so I'll move on to item number two of the group of the meeting minutes from our April eighth twenty twenty five meeting. Have any members of the planning board have any comments related to those meeting minutes? Do I hear a motion to accept them as presented?
I'll make a motion except the meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Matt, second by Bill, roll call vote, Theo.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well. So those meeting minutes are accepted from the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting. With that, I'll move over to the continuance of the public hearing associated with the A D U zoning amendment. So to provide an update to the board, we did get clarification from Council Mullen that the changes in that were contemplated at our last planning board meeting. Would be acceptable to be incorporated into the main motion at town meeting. And therefore, um, so long as we move to incorporate those, um, that that could be uh, incorporated as part of that process and would not require a floor amendment. So I don't know if any other members of the board have any other comments related to that. Um, the, the content that we're specifically talking about, as I recall, the specifics that we're talking about are cleaning up the language associated with the um, acronym as well as the removal of some language associated with grandfathering. So I see Mr. Spaulding has raised your hand.
Thank you. Um, before getting into the content, I was wondering exactly what Town Council, um, Tom Mullin shared as far as, um, the correct way to move forward. I just wanted to make sure, I just want to learn from it.
Uh, so the, the email, so Sam, uh, emailed C- Council Mullen and with a copy of the comments, uh, a- asked reviewed with Attorney McGrill at his suggestion in our last meeting. And, uh, his response was, as I quote, "I believe that the planning board could incorporate these minor changes in its main motion adopting the substance of the article."
Okay. And that was it? Okay, so meaning we don't have to do anything on the floor of town meeting. This is what we put together now is will be printed in the town warrant?
I don't know if it will be printed in the town warrant. Um, I will have to double check. Uh, if that's already gone to print, um, I can check in the morning, but uh, either way they would, um, typically in the, in the warrant packet, we have a, uh, we would have the updated copy with a note that this is, you know, comments from planning board and or we could include the original and a copy as with comments from planning board. It's only a couple of pages, so it's not really, um, a heavy lift.
This is good. It's a good learning experience. Um, good to understand. Thank you.
And could we bring up those comments just so anyone who's watching this one meeting doesn't need to go back and see the other meeting so we can be clear on what we are voting on to modify.
Yeah, and S- Sam or Attorney McGrill, I don't know if either one, I don't know if I have a copy of the actual comments, uh, that were presented last time.
Let me see if I can find them.
I have them if that helps.
Yeah, if you want to go ahead just to expedite the process, that's fine. I would have to search back through my email.
I can do that, Samantha.
Thank you.
Can I share, please?
There you go.
So the first was to get rid of prohibited regulation. Cause it was just in the definition section. And then if you make the change further down, it's the only time prohibitive regulation is, is referenced. So there's no need to, so it gets rid of that. And then this is the language, uh, in C on the grandfathering that I'll blow up for you to. Alright, does that, and then we were gonna change, um, was it? P A- A D U just to just A D U, is that correct? Think Samantha was just gonna correct, uh, or just edit this to just be consistent with the defined term.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of references of protected A D U. Um, and you either need to use P A D U or protected use accessory dwelling unit. You either have to spell it out one way or another. You can't add an additional terminology in there. Um, so that just has to be cleaned up and that's a very, very, very minor change.
I didn't redline that. I just assumed that Samantha was gonna do that because we had talked about that.
That, that one's purposely, I mean, that's, excuse me, it's not substantive. It's effectively like a typo.
So really, can you go back to the, to the, so this is really the, the, the main element, right? Is the, the theoretically, if the planning board agrees, the, the motion would be to include as part of the main motion. Removal of prohibited uh, prohibited regulation definition. And then to remove the language as contemplated on the screen. As far as I understand it. And then we would need to vote whether or not to, uh, provide, recommend favorable or disfavorable action related to the overall substance and specifically related to these proposed modifications. So any members of the planning board have any other comments or questions related to this particular element?
No, I, I, um, it's, it's straightforward and I, I, I think we all certainly appreciate the, the clarity.
Alright, I, I will make a motion for the planning board to approve the warrant article for accessory dwelling units with the minor changes of removing the definition of prohibited regulation. Uh, item H and then re numbering or item, itemizing those, uh, in appropriate order. And then to remove from section C. The items that have been highlighted in, on this document which are, um, I, I, I'm just gonna read it. So for B, section C would read accessory apartment of any size previously allowed. Sorry, I'm gonna put my glasses on, make it a little easier.
I'm mad, Matt, before you continue, I, I just want to say it's three C. I think we should.
Three C, okay. For three C, uh, it, it shall read accessory apartments of any size previously allowed. Pursuant to a special permit and or variance granted by the zoning board of appeals shall be deemed a protected use A D U hereunder and shall not be subject to any conditions stated in said special permit and or variance, including but not limited to owner occupant's occupancy, number of tenants, familiar tenancy and parking spaces. And furthermore, any restricted covenant recorded at the middle sex registry of deeds related to said accessory apartment shall be deemed null and void and have no further force or effect. Finally, no additional A D U shall be permitted on a lot with a previously approved accessory apartment.
So I hear a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So through the chair, some quick clarification, can I add or do I have to wait until you?
Uh, I believe we've got a motion, it was a seconded, so I think that we, um, the, unless there's uh, a specific reason related to this motion.
Um, it is related to this motion. Um, could, did you clarify, um, Matt, uh, did you include the, um, P A D U? Consistent reference?
No, I didn't. A- and
In your motion, okay.
And that, so it's basically gonna be, we're gonna remove P A D U and just make it protective use A D U? No.
No, we're going to remove all references to protected use A D U and refer to them either as their full name of protected use accessory dwelling unit or as their acronym P A D U.
Alright. I amend my
Thank you.
My recommendation to include, uh, Samantha's statement there.
I second the amended motion.
Okay, so motion by Matt, seconded by Bill. Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes as well. So the motion to, um, provide a favorable recommendation associated with the accessory dwelling unit by law and to make the recommended changes, uh, as described herein has passed five to nothing. Anything else before we move on to items not anticipated by the chair?
Um, so I, we, we, I, I jumped ahead on that recommendation because we should have closed public hearing. So, um, I, I think we need to, I think you need to see if anyone, we still have public hearing open, so we need to see if anyone had any comments on it and then we need to close that before we actually take.
You're done.
No, I actually, Matt, I think, I think we're okay because this was a change to what we are proposing and now we can open it up and ask for public comment with the changes. And then once we close public comment, uh, the hearing, we could go to and recommend favorable and unfavorable action as a board. I believe that would be the correct, um, order.
So we just voted to amend the, the motion that's under consideration and then we still need to take another vote to either recommend or favorable or disfavorable action?
After we hear from the public, this wasn't a public matter for anybody to have input on except for our board. This part, we could have opened it up to ask for any questions from the public, but I don't believe we need to. We're making the changes and now we're presenting it back to the public and say, does anybody have any comments? Once that section is done, um, then we will close it. And then as a board, vote for favorable or non-favorable action. I, I believe, um, Attorney McGrill, any support on that?
I, I think you're right.
Okay.
You made the change and now you're presenting the change for public comment. And then you'd close the hearing after the public comment and then you vote on the recommendation.
So in that case, uh, do any members of the public wish to have any comments on the amended accessory dwelling unit by law that is before the board for consideration? Uh, whether or not to make a favorable recommendation or not recommend a favorable action? If you are a member of the public who wishes to have a comment, please raise your hand and before starting to speak, make sure that if you have the ability to turn your camera on, please do so and then identify your name and your address. Uh, Attorney McGrill?
Uh, Brian McGrill, eighty-one Outlook Road, Mr. Chair. I, I would respectfully, uh, recommend, um, favorable action that you support this. I think it's a, a well-done by law. I commend the planning board and the, and the town planner for your efforts on this. Um, you, uh, the town of Wakefield, because of your efforts, is way ahead of the curve on this. Uh, a lot of towns are backpedaling this and don't know what to do with it, haven't even contemplated yet. They're going to run into problems with it. Uh, you've spent a lot of time on this. It's a really good bylaw. It fits well into what's required by the state and, uh, so well done and, um, I would recommend, uh, support.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to have, provide comment? Uh, seeing none, any other members of the planning board have any comments before we, uh, potentially take a motion? Uh, Mr. Spaulding?
Thank you, Jim. Um, I just, to Brian's point, um, thank you, Sam, for the work that you did to pull this together. It was so messy early on with things changing from the state, like it's felt like every other week there was a new way to go about this. And thank you for sharing those videos and stuff to get up to speed. I think it was good to really understand what other towns were doing, what we could do. Um, I felt like we were very locked into what we could and couldn't do, but it was great to find those openings and um, like the short-term, short-term rental, long-term rental and some of the other, um, parts like them. Uh, yeah, so there was, this went really well and I think, Sam, I just have to commend you on how you present and how you share that, I think is better than the town of Wakefield has had in a long time for how, um, this works. I mean, from watching this, watching you from the last two very difficult, from the MBTA communities and then the ADUs, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other members of the planning board? Uh, seeing none, uh, correct me wrong, for closing a public hearing, we don't need to vote on that, right? We can just close it. So in that, that case, uh, well, we can consider this public hearing closed. And, uh, and then any other members of the board, uh, feel free to, uh, make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we recommend, uh, favorable action of, uh, the accessory dwelling unit zoning, um, uh, bylaw amendment as amended tonight.
A second.
So motion by Theo to provide favorable recommendation on the bylaw as presented. Seconded by Kevin, uh, Bill.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And yes is my, to, uh, myself as well. So a motion carries five to nothing. Uh, any other items on the A D U zoning amendment before I move over to items not anticipated? Okay, uh, items not anticipated by the chair, uh, any other members of the planning board have anything they would like to bring up at this time? Mr. Spaulding?
Yes, um, two things. One, um, if you don't know, last night Town Council, um, proposed a different um, a change to the north half bike lane between church and Quanah Power Parkway. And it passed in four to three votes to, um, remove the bike lane and add sharrows and go back to the twelve and a half foot um, travel lane. So I just want to share that in case anybody hears anything about it, um. It was interesting to be in the meeting, um, so if anybody does have more questions, there's, if you go to Safe Streets uh, website, there's a lot of information on there. And that's the first thing. The, I'm trying to say this without being really angry. It was very frustrating, um.
Uh, Bill, before you move on to your second thing, um, can I interject? There's a couple of other things I'd like to get to before I, I think you're gonna say.
Okay.
Um, the, a couple of other board pieces of business, um, signage overlay, as, as many of the members of the planning board may be aware, there is a overlay for signage that is no longer really functionally working because there's a body, uh, it's like a design body that is no longer working. Uh, so my understanding is that the zoning board of appeals has been in consideration of uh, potential zoning overlay. Uh, Kevin, do you want to get, provide an update to the group? Cause you've, uh, been in contact with us at Z B A most recently?
Yeah, they, they've been looking at language that was put together by a former Z B A member. Um, they are looking at that on their April twenty-third meeting, I believe it is. Um, in, in what, um, Joe Pride, a member of the Z B A told me is hopefully they'll be uh, referring that to us after that. Um, I know prior to them talking about it, they were also going to share it with town officials to get feedback. So Sam, I don't know if they've sent that to you to look at yet. Okay. Hopefully that's coming over soon then, this week. But we should, even if it's not immediately after that, April twenty-fourth, I would expect it, uh, in the next few weeks for us to look at.
Kevin, is, is that a change in, in the actual zoning or is it a change in the administration and review of it?
I believe it's the administration and review, but I, I don't know for certain. Um, what I have heard is there were a lot of conflicting, um, verbiage in it, so that needed to be cleaned up.
I think in short, Matt, it's both.
Okay, so it would have to, have to go before town meeting to actually change the zoning and then how it's the review board or whoever's gonna be doing that. Okay.
I believe that's, I believe that that's the, the generalized intent.
So d- does that put signage in limbo until this happens or?
It's been in limbo.
Okay.
Yeah, the, and the whole reason, just, um, to give some additional information, the whole reason it's been in limbo is because there's supposed to be a designer review board. Um, the D R B has not been around for years. Um, no, I, I don't know the whole history of it, um, other than the fact that it's been defunct. So there hasn't been any signage approved for years in the downtown area. They get temporary signs like the plat- the banners. Um, but new signs have not been approved formally through the permit process. I, I mean, maybe some were installed without it. I don't know, but, um, that's the information I've gotten.
Uh, Mr. Spaulding?
A quick history on it. I know, um, there was an appointed position, um, Bob Sardella of Sardella Signs was the signed czar. And I think that was his self-title for a while and he had a desk in the, um, building department's offices to review. But I'm not sure that's happened in the last five years. Um, so I could be off on my time. But that was the last time when, um, our former town planner would go through and collect the information and then present it to um, the building department, to the sign, to Bob Sardella, and that would be the review process. So, um, and Brian, you might have a better recollection of the whole thing than I do. But I, I believe that, that it hasn't gone anywhere since then.
And that's consistent with what, uh, uh, Mr. Pride from the Z B A indicated us in our joint meeting. We had the bylaw review committee because there was a question at the time whether or not this would be incorporated into the recodification process. Or would be a standalone effort. And after, uh, some back and forth, I, I believe within the bylaw review committee um, that Kevin was a part of, uh, that committee elected not to pursue this and defer to the Z B A and planning board. And then the Z B A indicated, uh, when Kevin connected with Mr. Pride, that they had some base language that they had developed at some point. But they were going to review it and then essentially provide their recommend, recommended language to the planning board for consideration. So that's where, that's essentially where we stand is I anticipate after their meeting on the, the twenty-third, maybe shortly thereafter, hopefully we'll get something to be as the basis of our evaluation and then we can start making any, uh, tweaks that is necessary in working with Sam.
Sounds good.
And then I think, I think I, I speak for everyone on the board, but the fact that we have people who are, have signage limbo is not ideal. So I, I, my strong preference or I would advocate that we really aim toward making sure that this gets to the fall town meeting since spring is, is very, very late for that process. Okay, um, one other item I had, uh, for a formal for board business. Uh, so as, as folks, uh, on the call are probably aware, Mr. Lowry is not standing for, uh, election, uh, reelection to his position. So this will be his last meeting. So to accommodate that, um, we, we not knowing the, the result of the election, but we will have a new member of the planning board. Uh, so to that effect, uh, Mr. Spaulding provided some, uh, information that he had collated back when other members of the board to come on board, uh, for, I'll call an onboarding packet. So I took a pass at, at, adding a couple of things and in collating some, some documents that seem useful so, and, uh, gave that to Mr. Spaulding. Um, if anyone is interested in looking at it before we get ready to push it, please, uh, let me know and I'm more than happy to to send it for any, uh, comments, but just trying to make it as easy as possible to have a, a collated set of uh, documents. So whenever that new member does join, um, that they are able to get up to speed as quickly as possible. So feel free to reach out to me. Um, thank you, Bill, for A, collating the first round of it and then providing a couple, uh, useful comments, uh, uh, later, or earlier today. So with all that being said, I'll turn it back over to Bill for your second item that I'm assuming is, uh, is what you were.
It's a good segue. Thank you. Because when I joined the planning board, there was no onboarding package. Um, there was Matt. Our former town planner was super helpful, spending a lot of time in his office to understand. Paul was wonderful with handing me books to read and really catching up and I, it was really nice, but the, what I learned the most with Matt is that his humble professional approach to consistently review to the current codes, laws, regulations, everything that we had. But never stopped thinking about how we could improve it. And always looking from how could we make it easier, not easier, but more efficient for the butter, for the person who's coming in, for the, um, professional who is trying to get something done and not have it be dragged out by a process with too many reviews and too much paper. So I really appreciate Matt, um, all you brought to this board. And I know personally, I'll take it with me. So, thank you.
Uh, well said.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, I'd like to say that this is unique, but you know, the a lot of what I've tried to instill in this board is what I run into in my day-to-day job with dealing with many different boards and so, you know, the worst part and, and I know some of you know, you, you try to adhere to all the written regulations and submit a plan only to get rejected because past precedents or just will of certain people of unwritten rules tells you you need to do something else. So, um, that my impetus on doing that was just to make sure someone could go look at a document. If they put everything on it, that on their plan or whatever they were presenting, that met what was written down, then they would be in, entitled to, uh, you know, approval of that. So that's all I tried to do. Um, so again, I like to think it was something special, but it's just life lessons I tried to impart a little bit. So, uh, and I, day to day I go through, I have to deal with different towns and seeing some of the regulations they have and how poorly they're written or, or if they're on a fax that's been scanned ten times and then it's on their website. I'm just like, oh my God, this could have been done so much better, but hopefully Wakefield is a little bit better positioned at this point. That was my only goal.
Absolutely. Any other members have items not anticipated?
Um, I, I just want to say as, as a new, new planning board member, um, with Matt as the, as my first chair, you made it very easy. You were also very encouraging to seek other uh, uh, reference materials. You encouraged me to attend other planning board meetings of other communities to get some low, uh, uh, frame of reference and that, that was certainly helpful. Um, but you, um, yeah, uh, I, every, I second everything Bill said and, and, um, I appreciate it. But you also, like, I think have shown uh, a very strong interest in uh, the public good, you know, uh, public ways, making them safe, making uh, the drainage effective, making the snow removal, uh, clear and straightforward. And not, not letting people cut corners, but also doing things, uh, efficiently and effectively, um, so that, uh, over the long term, uh, public ways are, are safe and, uh, really, uh, a betterment for the, for the community. So you've, uh, you've made a longstanding, uh, I think impact, uh, in, in town. So thank you.
Thank you, Theo.
Any other members? Oh, go for it, Kevin.
I, I would add on to what Theo and Bill have said with, one of the things that I've taken away in the, the relatively shorter amount of time compared to those two that, that I've been on the board, is your focus on public transparency to make sure that, um, everything that we everything that we do as a board is seen by the public for those who who seek it out, um that that decisions are made in a transparent fashion and that we're always thinking about how to make things easier to consume by the general public, whether that's in a butter, whether that's a petition or bringing something before us or just someone who's who's tuning into our meetings so that everything is is clear and and understandable to everyone, uh wherever their knowledge level falls on the material.
Thank you, Kevin.
And I'll I'll take the opportunity as my prerogative as the chair to to go last, but you know, I do wanna say, you know, thank you, Matt, for all your s- service. Uh and really guidance for, you know, all the members of the planning board and you know, I think your your clarity of trying to make it so the process is transparent, there aren't unwritten rules that are tripping people up. But you know, I I you know, making sure we're having as fair a process for the on behalf of the town and also on the applicants, you know, striking that right balance and not just being a one trick pony for lack of a better term. Um I think, you know, the fair is the probably the word come that comes to mind the most. And so I really wanna applaud you for for maintaining that and um and you know, spending so much of your time uh in a volunteer position uh to help others, so thank you so much. Uh we will dearly miss you uh as being that that voice who always keeps me honest when I'm trying to trying to uh to keep things moving along and you're like, nope, you gotta make sure you pro- follow the process a hundred percent right and uh so thank you so much and uh you will be missed.
Thanks, Jim, and I'd like to say, um it's nice that I I'm able to step away from the board, there has been times in the past where I feel like if if I didn't stay on the board, perhaps uh I would not be able to, you know, sleep well at night, but now I know there are people on here, um we've got some procedures in place. Other people coming on can have something, a roadmap to follow and uh it just makes it easier for me to step away, which, you know, I never intended to be sixteen years on this board, but uh you know, it comes quick, so thank you, thank you, everyone.
Well, we've been the benefits of it for sure.
Well said, well said.
Uh with that being said, does anyone else have any other items not anticipated?
I have one thing to add if y'all are done. Um, I wanted to let you know that my, not to take away from this being Matt's last meeting, um but my um last day with the town will be May twelfth, no, May ninth. So, not, it's, you guys are all great, it's not, it's, I'm leaving on great terms, um I just was offered a position to uh go back to historic preservation, um and then work on some affordable housing housing and zoning stuff, so I just wanted to give you a heads up, um uh and let you all know.
Well.
Sorry.
Congratulations?
Thank you, it's very bittersweet, I I don't, um I have appreciated all that y'all have have done and reached out and shared and and um whatnot and I've been very grateful that I've been able to work so hard on so many different things to help you all.
In a short period of time, so.
Well, congratulations, whatever your your next endeavor is and I'm sure you'll be very successful and uh you two will so sorely be missed.
Thanks, yeah, I'll be, um just so you know, I'm the planning division manager for um Belmont. So you're in in Belmont, you can say hi.
Go for it, Mister Spaulding?
Well, I have one more thing, uh Matt, there's an opportunity for town planner opening here in Wakefield. I think you do well.
I I'm not my position, so no. Thanks for the offer, but no thanks.
I I couldn't help it, I couldn't help it.
But it's been good working with you, Sam, best of luck and uh
Thank you.
Um it's a it's a small area around here, I'm sure many of us will run into each other again, so.
And it was May ninth, sorry, I wanna make sure I have the right date for my own purposes.
Yeah, it's
Now, okay, so that would be before the next meeting, yeah?
Really, I will be um ushering the A D U process through, it was a, that was for me, that was a um a requirement, a condition um of the new job. Um because I, it's important to me to finish what I've started, so I'll be there through however long it takes to get the um the A D U process, uh the bylaw in, um and um hopefully passed through a town meeting.
Sounds good, uh so in that case, uh Kevin, make sure that uh the Z B A isn't sending the signage overlay to uh Sam's email address after he leaves, just cuz I could totally see that happening if we don't say, hey, please send it to Kevin. Um, okay, uh well, uh anyone else have any other items? Uh hopefully no one else is resigning.
All right, well, yeah.
So in that case, uh I'll move on to item number eight, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Why, Matt? I will make a motion to adjourn, but I will only accept one person to second it.
I'm not gonna second it, so someone else can do it.
All right, thank you.
Well, motion by Theo, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Theo, uh seconded by Kevin, uh Mister Spaulding?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Matt?
No.
And yes.
Just like I would never not vote for myself for chair, I'm not gonna vote to close the last meeting.
Awesome, so motion passes to one, all right. Good night.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.